I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Kiefer. Mr. Albrecht.
Here.
Mr. Di Maria.
Here.
Mr. O'Handlam.
Here.
Mrs. Seabird.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, appreciate that. Additions and corrections to the agenda, are there additions and corrections?
There are to the consent agenda, under Human Resources, the MCPS Cafeteria Plan, and under Personnel, ratification of personnel.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, Superintendent's Announcements and Spotlights, I guess that's Mrs. Ratford.
Thank you Chairman Williams, Dr. McGorick, good evening Board members and to all those who are here tonight. I stand before you to do our last spotlights for the 2017-18 school year. Tonight, you know, oftentimes we like to highlight some of our programs in our school system, and so I'm so very happy to have representatives from the Osborne High School Eagle Writing Center here tonight. Ms. Trisha Callahan is here with several of her students, and they're going to talk about some of the highlights from the program for this year. Okay, so introductions, you guys, I am Mrs. Trisha Callahan. I am the Director. Let's just go this way. Gladys.
My name is Gladys Gonzalez, I'm actually a recently graduated student from Osborne High School, and I tutor in the Eagle Writing Center for three years.
Hi, I'm Christine Tan, this is my first year as an Eagle Writer, and I am a junior at Osborne High School, and hoping to come, or continue as a tutor in the following year.
Hi, School Board Members, my name is Everett Hernandez, my name. I recently also graduated from Osborne High School, and I only tutored for one year.
Hi, I'm Leon Songo, I also tutored for one year, and I'm a rising senior, and will be continuing as a tutor in the Eagle Writing Center.
Okay, so I was going to start and tell you guys briefly about the background.
Hi, welcome, welcome guys, how's it going? Mr. O'Handlam, Ms. Williams, Mr. Albrecht, School Board Chair, Mr. Williams, Dr. McGorick, Di Maria, Mrs. Seabird.
Must be challenging to stand outside of the podium.
It is, very, very challenging. So, a little bit of the background for Osborne High School. Osborne High School has supported the Eagle Writing Center for the past three years. We have grown in terms of space, purpose of sessions, and the number of students and the number of tutors and students. Starting out with ten tutors and a small computer lab for simple writing assistance, we have expanded into having twenty-eight tutors and 1,750 sessions in our own classroom, and additional classroom space for work keys, SOL remediation, and URS assignments. Even though the extensive changes, even through the extensive, ah, sorry, extensive changes, our mission statement has remained consistent. We want to create an environment that uses imperfections to progress a student's writing ability. Through that space, students can develop their own voice. This mission has allowed us to reach a growing number of students, specifically through the work the Director and the students have completed to advertise this center.
Hi, so in the Writing Center, we do a lot of promotional things to get students to come into the Writing Center. So, one of the things was Promotional Week. The goal of Promotional Week is to provide an informal method of writing that will hopefully inspire Osborne students to write creatively in a low-stakes setting. Tutors guide OHS students through writing activities such as similes for skittles or acrostics for airheads. As you can see, the light blue bars represent our numbers for student participation from last year, while the dark blue bars represent our numbers from the past Promotional Week. As shown, we have either met or exceeded our numbers from last year. We have seen significant growth in student participation and the overall response to our Promotional Events. Apart from Promotional Week, we have also implemented other promotional strategies and events for students throughout the school year, which include writing SOL Power Packs and cookies and composition. We're using support students at Osborne. For the writing SOL this year, tutors have made baggies with candy, vanilla bars, mints, and, sorry, and motivational honey nut. Their purpose was to inspire students to perform their best on their writing SOL test. With half-full baggies sectioned out for the two parts of the test, a total of roughly a thousand bags were made. Additionally, Cookies and Composition, an after-school tutoring event, was an easygoing environment for students and tutors to share cookies while working on writing. The event took place over three separate dates, and over 100 students attended the event. In the future, the Writing Center plans to offer students other workshop-based after-school events. In addition to in-school promotions, our Writing Center works with programs and out-of-school tutoring.
Starting November 2017, tutors began working with MET students during MET Advisory Block, which ran from 7:15 to 8:00 a.m., twice a week. Throughout the school year, tutors facilitated over 412 tutoring sessions by the end of May 2018. This was the first time the Eagle Writing Center has worked with students outside of OHS, and the results were profound. We plan on continuing this work with MET students during the next school year. Additionally, the relationship between the Eagle Writing Center and the AVID program has continually developed over the past three years. In the past year, the tutors have completed over 400 tutoring sessions with AVID elective students, grades nine through 12, on a variety of writing assignments, including personal statements, scholarship essays, resumes, and college research papers. It has been a valuable connection that will continue to grow over time. We also sponsor events that highlight multiple stages of writing, including the Lounge and Master's Class. These events continue to plant the seeds for new writers sharing their voices for the first time, as well as nurturing the existing writers in their growth towards performance and publication. We believe that events such as the Lounge and Master's Classes are ways that high-performing, highly creative students can stretch out of their comfort zone and produce a higher level, perhaps even achieving publication, award, or scholarship. Certainly, performing in the Lounge and taking part in the writers' workshops are means for Osborne students to set themselves apart from their peers when applying to colleges and scholarships. During the Master Class this year, Herta Feely, award-winning author of Saving Phoebe Morrow, answered publishing questions and facilitated creative writing for OHS students. And here's a little more information on the growth of the Writing Center itself.
So far, the Eagle Writing Center has been open for three years. Every year, more and more tutors have been recruited, and because of that, the number of tutoring sessions have grown. We've seen that with every increase in the tutors that we've gotten, so have our tutoring sessions. They've actually about doubled for the, every school year leading up to our third year. The growth of the tutors shows that many would like to take responsibility and discipline and hold an important role in the organization. The number of tutoring sessions also shows that the Writing Center is reaching out to as many students as possible. Students of all levels, ranging from grade to even their level of speaking English and where they are in their English classes, that's, we apply to all of the students at Osborne. As for the coming school year, the Writing Center will be made up of 50 tutors, and hopefully by the end of the year, the goal will be to reach 2,500 tutoring sessions. We also have some more details of the testing data in our center, which would include SOL and work keys. So, our main purpose was to provide time, space, and staff for face-to-face and online student tutoring sessions to walk through many aspects of the writing process for students at Osborne. The Eagle Writing Center was to play an important role in the school improvement plan and to improve scores for the writing SOL. Based off the scores, students improved an average of 30 points on their writing SOL, and we were able to help 49 students pass the writing SOL this year. Beyond data, we've actually had a lot of great experiences as tutors. I can speak personally that I've definitely learned a lot about the education process and teaching and strengthened my own writing skills, and I'm sure many of the other tutors would say the same. So now, we're going to go on to some closing remarks, maybe? No? Accolades. Thank you.
On this page, there's pictures of IWCA, CAPTA, and when our teacher Trisha Callahan won an award at, for, it's right here, sorry, Futures Leader Award in Chicago. And in December of the same year, David Garcia and Javier Morales of the Eagle Writing Center presented at the Capital Area Peer Tutoring Association, CAPTA, which is the bottom right, if you guys want to see it, the conference. Twenty-five additional tutors were able to attend the conference itself. In the past year, nine additional tutors, four groups submitted proposals to present at the SSWCA Conference of 2018, and they were all accepted. In January 2018, the Eagle Writing Center was awarded its third grant from the Manassas City Public Schools Education Foundation. Finally, during March of 2018, the Virginia School Board Association awarded the Eagle Writing Center as a showcase for success. And we'll end it with conclusion and Twitter.
Yeah, Twitter, okay. To learn more about our accolades and all of the crazy things that we're always doing in our classroom, please follow us on Twitter. I want to thank you guys so much for taking the time to hear some of our accomplishments and for providing all the support that you give to Osborne and the Eagle Writing Center. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to thank the students and all 50 of the upcoming tutors for next year. I mean, writing is how we learned about the past, and it's likely how future generations will learn about us. It's really critical to success in an era where it's just really too easy to put a couple of letters and emoji con and send it off into the ether and say, "I wrote something." To have you doing critical writing and critical thinking is just really special. I appreciate everything you're doing, and congratulations for it.
Thank you. Sir.
Before you guys leave, if you're leaving, I would leave. I was very impressed with all of this, especially our two graduated seniors. It's June 26th, and you're still working on this, and you're still here. Again, I would have left, I'd be at the beach or something and not doing anything constructive. So, it's a testament to our schools and to our teacher, what a great job she's done, and I commend both of you for being here. You two too, we'll see you next year. Thank you, sir.
Sir, anybody else? Mr. O'Handlam?
Yes, I just want to thank Ms. Callahan and all the students for all you do. What I found most amazing about that is that you have students who get up and go to METs an hour before they need to be up and at school. That, to me, is amazing. I could never get my kids to make it at eight o'clock, let alone at the early hour you're there. So, thank you for all you do, all of you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, thank you again, we appreciate it.
All right, I don't know if I passed my limits.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, certainly we'll allow you to be able to say something to them before they skip out tonight. So, our final spotlight tonight is something that we have been very excited about launching. Dr. McGorick and I started this process a good while earlier in the school year of wanting to meet with local realtors and others to talk about people who may be interested in moving to the area and who would not necessarily, you know, find themselves on our website immediately. And so, as we talked about it, you know, the draw for families oftentimes is not necessarily just the school system, or just a great place to live, to find a home, but also the amenities in the area, things that they can do as a family, and that type of thing. And so, many years ago, I think we also talked about, you know, the opportunity to answer the question, Wyman Assis. And so, the development of this website is very exciting to us. We were able to sit down with some realtors in the beginning of this process. Ms. Williams was one of them, and also Jackson Miller, Marcy Settle, also working with Imagine Design, just to share out some of the things that we had on our mind and could not exactly, you know, put on the screen immediately. But, we're very pleased to announce that the site is ready to launch, and working with Imagine has been great. What we desire to do is to have this as a landing page for a lot of the realtors, the Prince William County Realtors Association as well, so that they can direct families to go there, and they don't have to necessarily navigate through the announcements and things that we would have on our regular website. This is something that we believe will answer a lot of the questions that they have. So, I think we just wanted to demo a little bit of it tonight, just to share with the community. Did you want to chime in, Dr. McGorick, or are you just listening?
No, you're doing fine.
Okay.
It is live.
It is live, it is live. It's wymanasses.com, and it's currently...
Or org.
Or org, yeah, I think that'll be a redirect, but dot com is the promotional website. And so, it'll be, like I said, it'll be housed on our website and others, and other places. But, it is stories about experiences that people have had in the schools and in the community, which is very exciting to us. A lot of the parents and community members, businesses, who lent their stories to us, they were just very exciting to read. So, you can see here, let's see, I should probably just do it here. We talk a little bit about our city, living here, playing here, working here, and learning here. And as you navigate through the site, there are familiar things that are here, but things that people would want to know when they're coming to the area. So, if they're trying to locate a realtor, if they want to know more about the actual city that they're moving to, what about transportation, how to get around to our local places, and certainly about education. We definitely have About Playing here, so we feature, that's a familiar event that people heard, the color vibe race here. But, the events here not only link to the city of Manassas through HMI, but also the many events that are going on in our school system. It gives them an opportunity to download the Manassas City app, and they can stay connected that way. Links to information about dining, encouraging them to stay in the city of Manassas area, in our great Old Town, Manassas shops and things like that, boutiques, through shopping. Parks and Recs, again, as we said, this is family-oriented, so we wanted to make sure that we let them know about the great parks and things that we have here in the city. Also, working here, just giving them an idea of the many companies that we have in our area, that they, if they want to apply there, of course, and they're more than welcome to apply to be a part of Manassas City Public Schools, because we are a big employer for the city of Manassas. So, in our stories about the schools, you can see here, Apple Federal Credit Union is one of our biggest supporters, and they work with us through our Teacher Mentoring Program, they are members of our Education Foundation. And so, we were very pleased to receive a story from them about the work that they have done in Manassas City Schools. And then also, there's a link that will go to our business directory, here at the top where it says "Our Businesses." These businesses, their information, their website, their hours, and things like that are listed for people if they want to check that out. Also, I think for the community, this one, and as you can see, when people click on them, they get more information about, this is one of the community members that wanted to send a story in. And so, again, it tells more about their experiences. This person, I think, I believe, moved away and came back here to the area, and so she's telling the story on why she did that, because it is a great community. And so, as you can see, we highlight under our schools, the Governor STEM Academy, our CTE Program, the Governor School at Innovation Park, arts in the schools, and we also show that our art in the schools also expands out into the city. We showcase a lot of the activities that our students are afforded to participate in throughout the city of Manassas, and also inside of our buildings, and then our Footsteps to Brilliance Program. We also give people an opportunity to volunteer in the school system, so that's a connection that we want to be able to make. We're working very closely with, if I go back here to the front page, working very closely with the Education Foundation, are there our pictures, Dr. McGorick? That's the Imagine Group, because they've done a lot of things with us as well. But you can see here, the logo for the Manassas City Public Schools Education Foundation. Right now, our businesses that are part of the foundation are the, I guess, the ones that were invited to start off, you know, giving us their stories for the site. Eventually, I think after a year, about, we're working with the foundation, Katie Keegan is here, she's the Executive Director, for sponsorship opportunities for people who would like to feature their businesses here. So, we're very excited about that. And so, as you can see, we have some links here to economic development, the historic Manassas area, and other ways that they can locate realtors once they move to the area. So, again, it's something that we're very excited about, we like the way that it's categorized, so that if you are a potential employer, you know, looking to move here or start your business here, it kind of gives you an idea of some of the things that may draw some employees for you. And then certainly, if you're looking to have a place to raise your family and that type of thing, we believe that it's filled with lots of great information that'll help you make that decision as well. So, I think that's about it. You sure you didn't want to say something?
No, you didn't.
Okay. Well, just like I said, we just wanted to preview so that people could see a little bit about it as we promote it in the community.
Thank you, and look forward to getting an update on this in the fall, but before I let you go, any comments from our Board Members? This is an awesome initiative, thank you, it's definitely going to help us, and it's great that we put out there something positive, because too often over here is the negative. So, thank you both for this initiative, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, Board Committees. Are there any committee reports? Haven't heard about any.
We did have a finance meeting, some of the actions come up tonight with the CIP.
Okay, cool, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Board Member Comments, and I'm going to use my chair prerogative to move Board Member Comments after the Action Agenda, so we'll move those to later. Next up, Citizen Comments. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the city of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here, we treat citizen comments as a public hearing and do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful in presenting your comments. I have three people signed up, Chelsea, Francie, and David, are those all correct? Any other commenters who want to sign up? If not, we will start with Chelsea.
My name is Chelsea Van Kirkove, and I am a resident of Manassas City and a former special education teacher for Manassas City Public Schools. As a former MCPS special education teacher and current resident of Manassas City, I have concerns regarding the injustices I have seen and experienced myself within the school district. While classroom teachers are held accountable for a multitude of responsibilities, they are often unsupported by the division. The lack of knowledge or complete and utter disregard of administrators and central office, staff, or students' legal rights is appalling. Often concessions are made to cover the ineffectively provided supports needed for students with IEPs, ESOL services, or social or emotional concerns. As a community, we say we want what's best for our children and students. It is time for all of us, including staff, parents, administrators, central office, the school board, and the community in general, to take action. Our students need help with their social and emotional well-being. We should be investing our money in effective support systems to help our children starting in kindergarten, not adding high-paying physicians to central office. Parents and teachers should work together to give students the education and opportunities they deserve, while at the same time supporting each other by holding children accountable for their actions. We do a huge disservice allowing our students to get away with unsafe, disrespectful, and disruptive behavior. We should be joining forces to support our children with the resources they need and the collaboration it takes for all parties to help them to be socially and emotionally healthy. We all need to feel compassion and have empathy for one another. Imagine the good we could do to create the best district around. All it would take is a partnership with all stakeholders, utilizing each other's expertise. Teachers should have a voice in decisions involving their students. Human resources should show their humanity towards others. Administrators should be active participants in their student behavior and climate at their school. Parents should support their children's education by encouraging their children to be hard workers and respectful learners, while also understanding teachers are human and sometimes make mistakes. Community members should partner with our schools to lend support in any way they can, whether financially, making donations of supplies, or sharing their own mentorship or experience with our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Francie Van De Beer, please state your name and affiliation with the school system, please.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm speaking as a parent of three MCPS students and as a member of the city of Manassas. I'm no longer a Manassas City Public Schools educator. I chose to resign on June 14th after receiving a directive from my administrator forbidding me from crying in front of my students out of frustration with their behaviors. This was the end of a painful year where many students struggled with boundaries, discipline, and often lacked empathy. Our division's leadership lacked the desire to support our educators by holding students and indirectly their parents accountable for destroying the learning environment. Students need routines, boundaries, and expectations, and they need to be consistent in order for students to feel secure in a stable learning and community. As soon as I needed our leaders to support me in maintaining these boundaries and reinforcing these expectations, my 22 years of experience as an educator apparently counted for nothing. I must speak up for my children's teachers, my former colleagues, and the educators that have suffered the brunt of blame for our failing school system. Manassas City Public Schools' retention of teachers has been dismal for years. Our superintendent would argue that this is the case nationwide, which has been her go-to excuse for all things wrong with MCPS. She's wrong. There is a divide between the decision-makers in central office and the people who actually teach our children. Teachers feel powerless in MCPS. We cannot possibly teach, mentor, nurse, counsel, arbitrate, guide, and more when there's no room for human error or apparently even human emotion. Until that divide is closed, our teachers will continue to leave and our students will continue to suffer. Our toxic environment will cause us to lose amazing teachers to other districts, other careers, and early retirement. Our teachers will remain reluctant to advocate for themselves and their students for fear of repercussions, no matter how many hollow assurances are made. They will continue to feel beat up and powerless. Our teachers will not feel safe approaching people like our Executive Director of HR when they need assistance. Instead, they will continue to find our leaders ineffective and look for new leaders in other districts. I argue that MCPS can do better. We are a small district that can make a difference in the lives of our students by functioning as a caring community. Our community is small enough that each teacher can have a voice. We're strong enough to have our teachers' backs when controversy arises, are empathetic enough to effectively help our many students who have experienced trauma, and are smart enough to figure out that our youngest students need to learn the social and emotional skills upon which a learning community is built before anything else. Who better to give valuable input than the people who spend more time with the students than anyone else? Finally, I'd like to charge the MCPS School Board...
Pardon me, it's three minutes.
I know, can I just finish my last paragraph?
I will give you 15 more seconds.
Okay. I would like to charge you with restructuring or at least retraining central office and school leadership. With our new superintendent being hired, we have a unique opportunity to mend our school system. The bullying from top down needs to stop. Together, all parties interested in...
Excuse me, thank you, thank you very much. Next up, we have David McGorick.
Mr. Williams, Board Members, this is to the Superintendent. On behalf of the Klan in Ohio, your two sons, Todd and... On behalf of the clan in Ohio, your two sons, Todd and Chris, your seven grandkids, and they also told me to make you cry. They want to wish you a successful and happy retirement, and they still remember washing the baseballs, and they want you to come and visit. So, here's a care package for you for your retirement.
Mr. Demaria, I thought that was for him, he was a bit disappointed, but uh-
We'll be going through it, hopefully there's some candy in there.
We'll get over it. Next up, the consent agenda, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move the School Board of the City of Manassas adopt the consent agenda as modified. Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Demaria, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, six-zero. Next up, the discussion agenda, starting off with student achievement. Ms. Katie Keegan.
Good evening, Chairman Williams, Dr. McGorick, and members of the board. I'm delighted to be here this evening to share about Division Professional Development and the Teacher Education and Mentor Program. This year, our Division Professional Development opportunities focused on project-based learning, personalized learning, blended learning, and leadership development. In addition to these areas, teachers had the opportunity to engage in professional learning, both at a division level, building level, and personalize ongoing coaching through our partnership with Better Lesson. As you can see from the quotes, the goal was to enable staff to set goals for their own learning and utilize resources that help them to achieve their goals. This year, we established two professional development committees, one for instructional staff and one for support staff. These committees give representatives the opportunities to express concerns, share ideas, and learn more about professional development opportunities within the division. Committee members collaborated and communicated with one another across schools and with the division. The main goals of these committees include establishing criteria for professional development, both for instructional and support staffs, providing feedback regarding current professional development opportunities and ways to enhance offerings in the future, assisting in developing the professional need or professional development needs assessment, and then reviewing those results from that needs assessment. They were also, the goal was for them to also be actively involved in planning professional development alongside their principals for the 18-19 school year. Committees developed criteria for quality professional development for all Manassas City Public Schools staff. These descriptors were adapted from the Criteria for Quality Professional Development included in the Every Student Succeeds Act. The mission statement was created through the work of these professional development committees. We wanted to ensure that the mission statement was directly connected to the mission of Manassas City Public Schools. The key words here are engaged and continual professional growth opportunities. Each year, a professional development needs assessment is sent out to the staff. This survey takes a close look at areas in which staff would like to learn and how they would like to engage in those learning opportunities with follow-up support. This year, we had 426 responses, which included staff from four major groups: administrators, instructional staff, student services, and support staff. Each group had a large number of professional development options from which they could indicate their highest areas of need. The 30 administrators that completed the needs assessment indicated that they would like to learn more about creating personalized professional development for their staff and providing effective feedback. 60% of the survey responses came from the instructional staff desiring additional professional development opportunities in project-based learning and addressing the needs of all learners when planning and delivering instruction. Student services staff expressed that they would like professional development centered around effective methods for involving parents in their child's education, as well as strategies for enhancing student motivation. There were 118 support staff members who also completed this survey. They wanted to learn more about their role in PBIS and effective communication strategies. The data from this needs assessment was broken down by school, department, and group, and then shared with the professional development committees and principals. This data will drive division and school professional development for the 18-19 school The results from the professional development needs assessment, as well as division goals, school focus areas, and strategic plan goals, were all incorporated when determining professional development pathways. The focus will be on providing opportunities within each of these professional development pathways for all staff. Several of the goals for utilizing these pathways, there are several goals for utilizing these pathways to create streamlined learning opportunities for all staff. These goals include aligning available resources, including digital resources, consulting with principals to identify focus areas within these pathways, and planning professional development for the 18-19 school year. Further developing trainers within our division to provide targeted professional development at each building, implementing a new professional development man, learning, professional learning management system. This will provide all staff with access to professional development opportunities within the division aligned to these pathways and the ability to track their own professional development activity, both within and outside of the division. Over the next several years, the goal is to continue to add additional aligned resources and learning opportunities within each pathway. We are fortunate to have so many talented educators and staff members within our school division that are willing to share their strengths with others. Ultimately, we would like for teachers to be able to set their, to set personal professional development goals and work within a particular pathway at their own pace. I would also like to take a few minutes to highlight our Teacher Education and Mentor Program, also known as our TEAM Program. I am honored to serve as the coordinator for this program, and I'm proud of the impact that it is making on so many new teachers. This slide reflects the vision and mission of the TEAM Program. The TEAM Program develops and supports the growth of teachers new to the profession or new to Manassas City. The mission of this program is for new teachers to become a part of our community and receive the guidance that they need to ensure a successful start to their career. This program has grown over the several, over the past several years, and it is because of the teachers who participate in this program and our ongoing funding support from Apple Federal Credit Union Foundation. The TEAM Program is always evolving and growing based on feedback that we receive from new teachers, teachers who have completed the program, and mentors. A new format for new teacher orientation was utilized this year, and it was based completely on feedback from the teachers. We are proud to offer three years of tiered, targeted support through the TEAM Program. Teachers are also able to engage in specialized cohorts, such as special education teachers, librarians, and counselors, so that they can receive professional development and resources that meet their individual needs. The motto of the TEAM Program is "Building Teacher Success." This is because we are building a community of teachers who will be equipped with strategies, resources, and support that they need to be successful. No two houses are the same, just as no two teachers are the same, but the goal is that each teacher will feel empowered to take ownership over their own development. As you can see from this chart, there are two paths for educators within the TEAM Program, one for beginning teachers and one for our newly hired experienced teachers, also known as our NETs. Our NETs are part of the program with a mentor for one year to help them acclimate to our school division and ensure that they have a support system in place from day one. Educators who are new to the profession or within their first three years will complete the beginning teacher path. In the first year, the focus is on laying a strong foundation by focusing on classroom management and establishing rules, routines, and procedures in order to foster collaborative classroom communities. Once new teachers have set that foundation, we can begin to focus on building that solid framework in their second year by taking a closer look at instructional planning and delivery. The second year of the program also incorporates training and project-based learning, data analysis, and technology integration. By the time teachers reach the final year of the program, the goal is to capitalize on their strengths and help them to further develop in their areas of interest by participating in the Make Your Mark on MCPS Program. This program enables third-year teachers to explore different ways in which they can utilize their strengths to make an impact on the larger group outside of their classroom. They have the opportunity to learn more about curriculum writing, presenting workshops, writing grants, effectively running a team, and or becoming a mentor. The goal is for them to move on to support other new teachers. Mentors support teachers at each level based on the needs of the new teachers. We provide mentors professional development throughout the year that focuses on goal-setting, effective communication, and collaborative relationships. Teachers who participate in the TEAM Program frequently share that the program directly meets their needs. This is due in part to the hard work of the lead mentors and the facilitators of workshops throughout the year who continually seek feedback and make adjustments throughout the year. The collaboration between all TEAM leaders and myself enable us to create a program that supports teachers as they become a part of the Manassas City community. Thank you so much for your time and attention this evening as I shared information about professional development and the TEAM Program.
Thank you. Are there any comments from board members? Mr. Hanlon.
I do have a question. As part of your professional development, is there a one-on-one discussion as far as development needs, say, per the annual performance evaluation or sometime like that, when a teacher would sit down with their administrator and say, this, both, you know, two-way, this is what I would like, and this is what I think you should have, in addition to the survey?
Right, so that happens at the school level between the administrators and the teachers, and so my role within that is to ensure that the principals are aware of all of the resources that are available to them, that they can suggest to that teacher if they identify a focus area for development.
Okay. Thank you.
The board members?
I'd just like to say, thank you. Katie, thank you for the presentation, very detailed, and I know that over a couple years now, you've given us more and more information, and more and more is working, and it's nice to hear, because then when we do, we do hear from our teachers sometimes, and they say, you know, "I'm not getting what I need," and we can say, "Did you answer the survey?" because I know this is something that we do. And it's great to see, and thanks for the feedback.
Thank you, Katie. And then Dr. McGorick, something you'd like to add?
Yes, one of the things that Katie really didn't speak to, because she's a little bit humble, is that this whole program is developed by teachers. So, when we, when I first came to Manassas, the teachers had a district division, division, district-led program by central office, that's the easiest way to say. And I had some mentors and mentees, mentees, come talk with me and say, "We would like to have our own program." So, when Katie came along and took over, it was just getting started. It took a long time for the teachers to really talk about it. So, what she has developed here has truly been by teachers, for teachers, and it is so very, very powerful. Apple Credit Union has been very impressed. Katie has also been, has had to go speak about our programs, because they are phenomenal, they're one of a kind, they're special to Manassas. And Mr. O'Hanlon, in response to that, the mentors hold a special role in that if the mentee would want to talk about their evaluation and get support, they can. Otherwise, it stays confidential, and the mentors never used as the administration, and that's what makes this so very, very special. We need more mentors, and I think that yearly, we grow by the number of mentors we have. So, thank you, Katie. This is just breathtaking with what you've done with the teachers.
Thanks. Dr. McGorick, I echo that, it is breathtaking. Doctor University of Virginia, which I love talking about, as you all know, we like to say that we're all lifelong learners. I've heard Mr. Albrecht say a few times that schools are the only place where 100 years ago, we had the same paradigm we have now, and we need to change it. In order to change it, we need to have teachers who are educated, developed, and have opportunities for professional development. You've done a wonderful job with this program, and I look forward to expanding in the future, and thank you for your leadership on it. It's very much needed and appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, finance and operations. And before we get started, Mr. Hawkins, I see Mr. Wolf, our councilman, has joined us, so thank you for joining us, Mr. Wolf. Mr. Hawkins?
Good evening. During the April 24th School Board Meeting, I introduced a proposal to establish an online payment system as an option for our parents and students to use initially for all mandatory fees and future expansion for a variety of other, for other transactions, such as ticket sales, concessions, yearbook, prom, et cetera. So, this system is not replacing our current system of allowing parents or students to pay their fees in person with cash or check. This is just opening another avenue for these fees to be collected that may offer more convenience. The system offers the same type of shopping cart experience that online shopping participants have experienced, but with the option to set up partial payments for each individual student at each, at each school from one location. The system is mobile and talent tablet-friendly. We believe another benefit of this system is to ease it, some administrative, will ease some administrative responsibility by having all funds collected directly, all funds that are collected directly deposited in each school's account with fully secured So, there's no cost to the school division, but the user of the system will be charged, you know, 3.95% transaction fee for, for any payments made. This equates to approximately a 40 cent charge for a 10 cent, $10 transaction. The vendor, the vendor is, is my school box, is used in over 3,000 school divisions nationwide and by most school divisions in our region. MCPS is currently, MCPS is currently using this system to assist parents who want to place funds on their students' meal account. Again, the use of this program is not mandatory, it's just offering another option to parents or students to pay for required fees or other activities. The system was discussed at our June 20th Finance Committee Meeting and received, I think, consensus approval to bring forward tonight for discussion, and if so desired by the board, to be brought forward for approval at the July 17th School Board Meeting. Are there any, any questions, concerns, comments at this time?
Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Mr. Hawkins wrapped up, we did discuss this probably for about an hour at our finance meeting. Mr. Demaria, Mrs. Kiefer, myself, Mrs. Williams, and Mrs. Seberg are also there. I think we're all, and we had our April meeting, Mr. Hawkins alluded to, we all support this, and it's where commerce is going. I think the discussion for the board as a whole really gets into who should pay the user fee. Mr. Hawkins is right, if we were to implement this on a wide scale beyond what we're doing for lunch, we've got the potential to shift work with the vendor then doing some of the tasking. We will have better accountability when you get the annual audit report every year. One of the big things is the school activity fund, and the amount of money, and then one of the big issues they have are teachers keeping money overnight, money staying in schools overnight, cash, et cetera. This is a way we could eliminate some of that risk. But part of the elimination of risk is, will it be used, will it be accepted if the parent has to pay the transaction fee? If we were to eat the cost, can we grease the skids of implementation? And we spent about a half of our time talking about that as a, as a committee. You know, Mrs. Kiefer's used to have her comments at the last board meeting with, you know, she does use the current system because she morally doesn't want to pay the extra fee. I kind of agree with her, by the way, but we're in the 21st century, we have to adopt something, this is absolutely the right way to go. I think the only question that we need to have discussion and consensus on amongst us is who should bear the transaction fee cost.
Thank you, great point, Mr. Albrecht. Any comments on this side? Any comments down here?
Yes.
Mr. Demaria.
Yeah, I agree with everything that Mr. Albrecht said. I think the user, at this point, the user should pay for the opportunity to use it, because nothing's being forced on them. I don't think that a lot of our population, well, I think a lot of our population would be unable to use it anyway, and if we absorb that cost, we'll be absorbing it for a select few, I think. So, I, I would be in favor of implementing it, having the- So I, I, I would be in favor of implementing it, having the person paying the bill pay the extra percentage, whatever it is. And none, none of this is set in stone. We can tweak it as we go along. If we're getting a whole lot more use than we expect, or if it looks like we're, we would get more if, if the fee changed, well, then we can look at that. But I think for, for starters, we ought to do it with the fee being passed on to the user. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. I thank Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you.
Next, moving on to the action agenda, new business. The first item is the OHS Center Stage.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just because this is coming back on the July meeting, we just heard two School Board members talk on different sides of the exact same issue. Is there a will of the board for which way staff would, that we'd like to see staff make the recommendation for? The previous recommendation was for the users to pay the fees. That would...
I think that's the recommendation, that's what we go with. And then we'll have a discussion next meeting and vote on that.
Fair enough.
Good point. Thank you. Action agenda, new business, OHS Center Stage Performance at Virginia School Board Association Conference. I'm not sure who's leading that.
Was she talking about that?
Oh, yes.
Dr. McGorick is.
Didn't we discuss this?
Yes, we did at the finance meeting. We said we agreed to the...
No, but we, we discussed it since then. Oh.
Okay. So Center Stage has been asked to perform, VSBA has requested that Center Stage at Osborn High School perform at the VSBA conference in Williamsburg in November. And I, I think it would be a wonderful opportunity for them because they are starting to perform more and more and now also going to competition. So in doing so, they'll be in front of a large audience of about over a thousand people and they will get to, to do whatever performance they decide. One of the things is, is that the, the conference starts like at 1:00 and they need to get there ahead of time so that they can be prepared for the performance and have everything set up. So they would go the night before. In talking with the director of Center Stage, I'm, I'm asking that the school board approve that the school system pays for their transportation, their, their attendance and everything at the, at the conference.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve the expenditures for the OHS Center Stage to perform at the Virginia School Board Association Convention in Williamsburg, Virginia, November 13th and 14th, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Demaria, second by Mrs. Seberg, that the School Board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve the expenditures for the OHS Center Stage to perform at the Virginia School Board Association Convention in Williamsburg, Virginia, November 13th to 14th, 2018. All in favor?
No, sir. We're in some discussion.
Discussion?
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Everything Dr. McGorick said is correct. The kids deserve this. They work tremendously hard. And if it's just a generic thing that they're going to, they deserve this. This, however, is not a generic thing that they're going to. They're representing this school system and this school board in front of the state school board, all of those people. And mostly, in my mind, they're representing Mr. Albrecht. He is our current Virginia School Board president and we talk about it all the time, all the work he puts in, all the days he takes off, all of the personal expense that he puts out to represent this state and represent this school board and mostly represent this city and our kids. And Center Stage, I've discussed this with Mr. Williams many a time. I am not a music aficionado, even though I use that word. They are really, really good. I mean, really good. And they represent us as well as anybody does. And they deserve it. And in my mind, most importantly, Mr. Albrecht deserves it. So I, I'm in total favor of this, if nothing else, just so that he can show off his school system. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Hanlon.
Mr. Chairman, I fully support it, but just for the record, do we have an approximate amount that, I mean, this is a motion without a dollar amount, that is an expenditure?
Right. I don't think that we have the amount here. I mean, I guess we could...
I was just curious if it was...
We talked about something at the finance meeting.
It's less than $5,000. We're using school buses. ALBA has got everything, has everything together.
Thank you. Good point.
No, I'm just, I just wanted to say real quick, I'm in total support of that. Again, every time we go down to Williamsburg, the students who are onstage singing and performing, it's, it, it is something well-deserved for them to be able to go down there and not have to worry about how they're going to get down there. So I'm in full support.
Thank you. Mrs. Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not only do they deserve it to be recognized, but I think of it as, you know, they're modeling excellence to other people throughout the state. And they're sharing that with other people that can take it back to their own groups. And students, more students will benefit from it.
Thank you. So I apologize, initially I didn't ask for discussion because in my mind, hey, we're going to do this. There was no reason to have the discussion. As I say that, excellence. Mrs. Sibeski, our councilman, walks in the room. Hello, Mrs. Sibeski?
Hello.
How are you? As you may or may not know, I've had three children and all three of them were in Center Stage for numerous years. So I've been all around the East Coast, New York, Williamsburg, competitions, all over the place with Center Stage from the time my daughter started in 2005, I think, to my last one left last year. Not only are they great in terms of what they do, but they foster excellence in the kids. From Center Stage alone, we've had children who are professional singers, who've done videos, who've been in movies, who are Broadway actresses, folks who are trying to act on Broadway. We have a ton of kids from Little Manassas who are pursuing their dreams in great part because of Center Stage, the leadership of Ms. Watkins years ago, and now Mrs. Easley. So this is a great opportunity for them to show off what we do here. And Mr. Albrecht is the only person who cannot kind of approach my trips to Charlottesville, you know? Not quite, but, you know, he's down in Charlottesville a lot. We don't talk about it a whole lot. He doesn't neither because he's humble about it. But he has done wonderful things with VSBA. And not only does it help the state, but it helps us because they always say, Manassas City School Board Member Scott Albrecht. So again, we thank you. Mr. Demaria's words were on point. You've done a lot for the state and for our city. And having been there to see how excellent we are is a great thing. So I apologize for not asking for discussion, but, you know, I just like, hey, we're going to do this. So, yes.
So just for the record, I want to correct it. It's not about me because if it were, I'd have to recuse myself and abstain. And I want to vote because this is about our children and positioning them so they can perform the best they can.
Good point. Thank you. So back to the motion by Mr. Demaria, second by Mrs. Seberg, that the School Board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve the expenditures for the OHS Center Stage to perform at Virginia School Board Association Convention in Williamsburg, Virginia, November 13th to 14th, 2018. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, six-zero. Thank you. Next up, finance and operations, Dean Elementary School Electric and/or Cable Utility Easement.
Good evening again. The City of Manassas has requested for us to sign a, for the Manassas City School Board to sign an easement, to allow them 15 foot of right-of-way or an easement on our property at Dean Elementary School to redirect and establish some electric lines along the railroad track. You also have in your packet the plat that shows, um, we're fighting over the controls. So hold on one second. So you can see where the established, that the line would be. At no time will, will our children be involved in this and we work very well with our partners at the city. And so if any, will be no impact on instruction or the safety of our children in any way. So therefore, we're recommending that we sign the, the easement to allow the City of Manassas to redirect some electrical lines along their easement path by the railroad track at Dean Elementary School.
Thank you. Any other motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to the School Board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve the Dean Elementary School Electric and/or Cable Utility Easement as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Demaria, that the School Board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve the Dean Elementary School Electric and/or Cable Utility Easement as presented. Is there any discussion?
Clarification for the record, to make sure we're all clear, because everybody knows we're talking about building a new dean and there's a lot of land over there. And without the benefit of seeing the plat or the situational awareness of the context of what we're talking about, I think in, in no version of the current universe would we be planting a building within 15 feet of railroad tracks. This in no way impedes anybody's future use of the land.
That's correct. Thank you. Any other discussion?
I was going to say about the same thing. We're waiving second reading. Have we only discussed this a couple of times in committee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have discussed this back and forth quite a bit. I'm just surprised that we have to waive second reading, which is fine because like Mr. Albrecht said, this is very, very close to the railroad tracks. It's not going to affect us at all, but I was just curious about that. I knew we've discussed it a lot. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mrs. Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Because of some other things that have gone in the city as far as removing trees in areas because of easements, will this remove any like 100-year-old trees or is it just the shrubbery there around the...
There would not be any, any tree removal that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other comments? Okay, so the motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Demaria, that the School Board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve the Dean Elementary School Electric and/or Cable Utility Easement as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, six-zero. Next item, FY 2019, School Board Budget.
So sort of might want to try to blend these next two agenda items together a little bit. On your, on the screen now and in your packet, you have the School Board Budget by Fund. If you start, the, the School Board originally adopted its budget on April the 10th and we presented it to City Council on April the 11th. Since that time, the General Assembly adjourned and adopted their budget very late this year in June. And so we've been, we had a Finance Committee meeting on the 20th of June and we discussed these issues. So if you were, if you were to start from the, from the right-hand side and work your way back, you will see where all of our funds come from, you know, from, from our major, from the city, the state, federal, local, and other, in the bonds, if any. And so the major thing that has changed from this, well, the only thing that has changed from this, for this proposal tonight and the adopted budget on, on April the 10th is the addition of $303,783. This is the entirety of the new money or the additional funds that were received by, that are projected to be received by Manassas City Public Schools on the budget that was adopted by the General Assembly. All of those funds in its, will be placed in a contingency reserve account to be used and be set aside for planned building, expansions, renovations, additions, primarily, I would imagine, in future years, maybe go towards the building of the new dean school at, at some point in time in the future. All of that is being discussed right now as far, including our funding, our future funding formula with, between the city Finance Committee and the School Board Finance Committee. We are working together, trying to develop a, a funding agreement for the next three years and also meeting with city advisors and, and preparing information by city staff and by school board staff on projected enrollment, funding going forward, and trying to make the best decision on when to build the new dean, dean intermediate school. Before I go on to the next of the CIP and the five-year forecast, are there any comments, concerns, questions regarding what's on the screen?
Can I make a motion, sir?
Yeah, please.
That School Board of the City of Manassas approved the revised FY 2018, 2019 budget as presented in the amount of $118,225,011 and authorized the School Board Chairman to transmit these estimates to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with School Board Policy, Virginia State Code, and the joint budget agreement.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Demaria, second by Mr. O'Hanlon, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the revised FY 2018, 2019 budget as presented in the amount of $118,225,011 and authorized the School Board Chairman to transmit these estimates to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with School Board Policy, Virginia State Code, and the joint budget agreement. Is there any discussion?
For the two people who might be listening or someone who wants to pick it up on YouTube later, be real clear. This is a real simple financial action we're taking to accept the $303,783 extra the General Assembly decided to, it is our portion of the additional K-12 funding for next year. We're putting that into a designated capital improvement account. We're not applying any of that towards next year's operating budget. Whether we're appropriating it and putting it into a fund balance, which might be used for any number of capital costs, whether it's to offset the future acquisition of a new dean, or if we can't afford new dean in an immediate timeframe, to talk about other kind of capital improvements we need to do to make the building usable for an extended period of time.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, again, I'll repeat the motion by Mrs. Demaria, second by Mr. O'Hanlon, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the revised FY 2018, 2019 budget as presented in the amount of $118,225,011 and authorized the School Board Chairman to transmit these estimates to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with School Board Policy, Virginia State Code, and the joint budget agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, six-zero. Thanks. Mr. Hawkins.
So the next item on the agenda, we'll be talking about the five-year forecast and the CIP. I'll start with the CIP first. The School Board only approves the CIP for one year at a time, although we do show our planning going out for, for five years. So in front of you is the five-year capital improvement plan. When you see the, the 303,783, that is that additional funding from, from the state that we received this year and since, or we plan to receive in FY 19. Also, since the state does a biennial type of budget, we have, we are showing that in FY 20, that any additional state revenues would also be transferred in, into that fund as well. Also, we are planning on, assuming that funds are available at, at the end of FY 18, which is this week, at June 30th of this week, hopefully we will have remaining funds left over. When you subtract, when you collect all of our revenues and subtract all of the expenditures out for FY 18, we're anticipating that we will have funds left over and we would like to transfer those funds into a contingency account to also to replace funds in, in the capital, in the capital account. So for FY 19, that's what the School Board will be reviewing and approving hopefully tonight, you'll see that $175,000 are for technology infrastructure upgrades. These are not laptops or computers for the students, but these are infrastructure upgrades such as servers and switches and other technology infrastructure needs. School bus replacements, approximately six school buses will be bought in FY 19 to keep our school bus, buses in compliance with the Virginia Department of Education replacement cycle. We've also allocated about $120,000 for additional buses if needed to, for, to deal with growth that may occur within the division. One of the big ones, the, the largest expenditure for this year would be to, we set aside $1.5 million for, if we're, if the proposal right now, the discussion between the School Board Finance Committee and the City Finance Committee is that we postpone the replacement of dean school for five years. It's really more than five years. It's five years before we start planning and before we start designing the school. Then it'll take a couple of years to build. So the earliest that the school would be able to open at, under our current discussions is September 2017. So we need... So, we need to know what we need to do to the building to make it that far, to help the building and provide quality instruction and a quality instructional environment for our students between now and whenever the new Dean School is, is built. I don't know, we've, this is a, this is just a projected amount. We have a consultant at Dean currently who's reviewing the condition of the building and will come back with a report mid-July to tell us what, what are the immediate needs of Dean? What are its estimated cost? They will also be preparing a document to determine whether, what's the best course for Dean going forward? Should we renovate the school or should we, we replace the school as, as we have been planning? So, we will have those consultants at, at our meeting as soon as the report is prepared. I'm not sure it'll be prepared by the time the next School Board meeting on July 17th, but if it is, we will ask them to be there to discuss with the School Board. And, and if we have it earlier, we may be able to have a Finance Committee, whatever the Board wants to decide how, how it wants to proceed. But, they certainly, hopefully, will be, have their report ready for review and presentation by the time the July 31st meeting that we have between the Finance Committee meeting of the School Board and the Finance Committee of City Council. So, that's, that's the plan for right now. We, if you go back up to the, when we go back up to the top, you'll see that we're holding over, a little over $600,000 of these funds to be used in future years to offset the cost of adding a roof at Mayfield in 2021 and to offset some costs that we, for FY 22 as well. But, again, we're just approving one year at a time, but you can see the planning going forward. On the five-year forecast, for FY 19, you'll see that we're getting state revenue of $52, 928,152 and we have, if we go down to the capital accounts again, you can see that $303,783 additional state revenue being put in, into a construction fund and also the projected, we're also having carryover funds from FY 18 of $1,142,815 being put back into the, into the capital accounts to, to match what was in FY 18. So, that it will, the FY, the FY 19 balance will be $7,489,607. That will be what will be, also be done in FY 19 under this proposal. Going forward, we'll have to see how, how we end up at the end of the fiscal years on whether or not we'll be able to continue placing funds in, in this account. It's unknown at this time whether our funds will be available at that time to continue throughout future years. As you can see, we, we appear to be in good shape for the foreseeable future. We will have to make choices and decisions. It is a state law that all of our budgets have to be balanced at the end of the day. So, depending on state revenue, our state revenue for, is known for FY 19 and FY 20, but in FY 21, 22, and 23, we are projecting 2% increases. Also, the amount of money for the city at this time, we only have the funding agreement at this current time of 2.625%. We, once, once that number is known for future years, we will come back and update this five-year forecast as soon as these committees decide on a new funding agreement. Are there any questions, concerns at this time?
Make a motion?
I'm going to ask to go to discussion a little bit out of order because I know we have a motion, but I'm looking at some physical looks at folks and we are in the middle of negotiating and as Mr. Hawkins said, the 2625, there's some really key points we want to talk about that we wanted to make sure we were communicating to the public. One that we're assessing has to do with the potential impacts to a dean based upon the joint meetings we've had to date with respect to the city's bonding agent has suggested the city cannot afford to build a dean. And if we push that out into the 2022-2023 construction timeframe, as Ms. Hawkins said, occupancy is 2027, what is the impact of that? And there's ongoing analysis associated what, with what the increase in construction cost would be. Construction cost, construction materials are going up significantly disproportionate to inflation. The political climate right now with where materials are coming from, a skilled workforce shortage, et cetera, that is projected, escalating future construction cost is a pretty, it doesn't look pretty. There's also costs we have with the current dean where we've made, this board has made conscious decisions to invest nothing in any of the energy savings or anything else in that building because in good faith, we thought in the four or five-year timeframe, it would be being replaced. We would want to revisit those decisions if that building needs to continue to be used to educate children for 10 more years or more. And then there's the other nuances associated with, as Mr. Hawkins said, the additional couple hundred thousand dollars from the state and also the underrun we have from this current year because while, I know that some people like to think this School Board and our staff spend every last dollar we have, in fact, we underran, as Mr. Hawkins said, by about $1.1 million that then goes into fund balance. That's part of then trying to apply that fund balance to future capital costs. When we passed our current budget, we passed a five-year forecast and a CIP and I, I kind of worry, we're going all over the place. Previous boards took, prior to any formal things happening, took a Baldwin, took a central office, took many things out of our CIP in good faith, and then we had a lot of discussions about we didn't know what our needs were. So, if we're taking that out now, is that really it? What's our real obligation to communicate to the city? We have a CIP and, and this is a modification of it that pushes some stuff out to the right and addresses some other things. We have a five-year forecast. We're not changing the city of some, although we, I think all know that has to change. So, I'm not sure that we are communicating quite the right stuff here unless it's recognized we're communicating something because we have to in accordance with our bilateral agreement and that's why we need to continue the dialogue.
Mr. Hawkins, are we required to do this?
So, we're required to balance, or to adopt a budget, you know, before June 30th. That's the reason why we're here tonight.
In terms of transmitting the CIP, the revised CIP, we're required to do that before June 30th. So, we have to just give them something.
Well, we have to, we have to adopt a budget and part of that budget document is the, is the capital improvement plan as part of the, of the adopted budget.
So, the revised CIP has changes in next year's? Of course it does because it's a trailer issue. That's the problem. Now...
We don't have any trailers in next year's budget.
So, what's the, what's the, beyond the fund balance transferring in on the CIP, there is no other change, right?
So, we put our, we put our state, we've put our state, additional state monies that we received this year into the contingent reserve. Then we, we're putting money, oh, leftover from fund balance in there. And then the other major change is, is that we have set aside a million and a half dollars, I don't know why this is doing this, to, to be able to fund upgrades to the current Dean School.
That's the big CIP, 19, that's right.
Okay.
I'll say one more thing.
Does, does that mean that we can't come back and revise it?
Right, as long as we're out of order, we'll continue to be out of order. I'll, I'll continue. You're right, we can come back and change this. Discussions with the city are still going on. I, I believe that council, for the most part, would prefer to do this sooner than later as well. They understand where we are. So, hopefully, something will be able to be worked out and we can come back and revise this and maybe not do Dean in, in, put it out five years, maybe put it out a year. Who knows? We'll see what we can do. If funding can be, can be turned around, we can come back and change this again. But for now, like I said, we have to have this by the end of the week, so.
Right, okay.
We'll do this and then update it.
All right, so to get us back into order, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the revised 2019-2023 five-year forecast and capital improvement plan as presented and authorized the School Board Chairman to transmit the revised five-year forecast and CIP to the City Council of the City of Manassas in accordance with School Board Policy, State Code, and the joint budget agreement.
Second. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. O'Handlon that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the revised FY 2019-2023 five-year forecast and CIP as presented and authorized the School Board Chairman to transmit the revised 2019-2023 five-year forecast and 2019 CIP to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with the School Board Policy, Virginia State Code, and the joint budget agreement. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say by voting for it, I reserve the right to ask for reconsideration in accordance with parliamentary procedure.
Granted. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it six-zero. And next up, we have School Board Comments. And before we get to School Board Member comments, I have two items first. I want to thank Mrs. Miller for ably filling in for Mrs. Garza. Mrs. Garza wanted to be here tonight, but she could not be. So, thank you very much for not making us miss a beat. We appreciate you being here. And I'd like Mrs. Bradford to come up to the podium if she does not mind.
We typically, every spring, we give Years of Service awards and increments of five years of service, but since Dr. McGork is leaving us, we're presenting her with a Years of Service Award tonight. So, if you will come down.
Does she show one of you?
Yes, she needs to open it.
You don't need to open it.
If you don't like it, I'm taking it.
Oh, thank you so much. Here's a service. It's a beautiful bracelet with the MCPS logo and 2018 on the back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford.
Thank you.
And now, we're just getting started. We're going to start off with Mrs. Williams.
All right. I thought I was going to go last, so I had something short in my head. First, I want to, just before I get to Dr. McGork, I want to say something I noticed, what I've been noticing the past couple of weeks when Katie mentions team with the teachers, when the Osborne High School Writing Center, the peers are teaching each other. One thing we didn't see tonight from the Writing Center students was, I've heard several students say over and over again, if it wasn't for their peers helping them, mentoring them, they wouldn't be where they are today. And I believe that's true with the teachers and I believe that's true. One thing I'm, I'm watching in the summertime at the high school level, the athletics, the, the coaches are giving responsibility to the, the captains of these teams and the teams have, the team captains are, are gathering their peers and making sure they're at practice every day. And I just really feel that's so effective and it's, it's amazing. I see that over and over again here at Manassas City Public Schools and I think that's great. Dr. McGork, so, oh, you won't cry, I'll keep it short. I knew her probably before she started her job here and I noticed one trait about her. She has a vision, she, she sees it at the end, she digs her own path, that straight path to get there, and she uses the tools, the people, the resources to stay on that path and she reaches those goals. And I felt when I, when I kind of recognized that way back when, I knew you were the right person for the job and you really have improved our system tremendously with my kids in the system. I've seen it and I really appreciate all of your efforts and everything you have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Very well said. Next, Mr. O'Handlon.
Well, everyone, we thanked everyone earlier, so we'll get right to Dr. McGork. And I want to take a moment to thank Dr. McGork for all she has done for the Manassas City Schools over the past six years. And on a personal note, I wanted to thank you for the Parent Leadership Academy, which I believe was my pathway to being here with all of you. So, I thank you for that and I want to thank you for the educational opportunities you have provided to my children, especially my daughter with her sports medicine and, and everything. So, thank you very much and please enjoy your retirement. I know personally, there's no better time in life than, than retirement. I get up every day and I do exactly what I want to do every day. It's, it's a wonderful, wonderful life. So, enjoy that. Don't look back, keep looking forward. So, thank you.
And I can, Dr. McGork, including being a grandparent, I talk to Peter all the time, but didn't even get it.
Yes, yes.
That's cool. Ms. Seberg, you're up next.
Dr. McGork, as we bid you farewell, I wanted to thank you for all that you have done for our school division and I personally wanted to thank you for the experience of working with you because I learned things that I wouldn't have learned any other way and I believe those things make me a better School Board member. I want to wish you much happiness in your retirement and I know you're going to love it. Good luck.
Thank you. And I'm going next. First, I know school's out of session, but Ms. Caitlin, Ms. Ewa, the morning preschool class, which is no longer there, sent me this note because I read to them. So, if they happen to be watching, which they probably aren't, thank you for this beautiful note. I really appreciate it. That's pretty cool. I enjoy reading the classes and that was a lot of fun. Ms. Kiefer could not be here tonight, she had family obligations and she sends her love and her regards and Ms. Garza's going to be here as well, she sends her regards as well. So, the way that I am, I don't like to talk a lot, but when I talk, I talk, so just, you know, get ready. I didn't have a lot of time to prepare this because I've been so busy. I planned on doing a whole long thing, so I did this in 10 minutes. So, if I forget something, I apologize, but hopefully it'll be up to your standards. First, I picked up a couple quotes. "A good teacher can inspire, hope, ignite the imagination, and instill a love of learning." And, "Teaching is a very noble profession that shapes the character, caliber, and future of an individual." If people remember me as a good teacher, that will be the biggest honor for me. Then the last quote I have is something I thought of and just thinking about educators that I've encountered. Educators change lives. Dr. McGork, you came to Manassas six years ago and you have changed lives from starting leadership academies, as Peter alluded to, to benefit our staff and community, hiring strong principals, establishing strong ties to the community and the businesses in our area. You have changed lives. From youth science, your latest endeavor, to your support of the arts and our student board liaisons, you have changed lives. From increasing our use of data to help our students and staff learn about our achievement, I know Dave lines would love the data thing, so, hey, Dave, wherever you are, to enhancing the CTE program and advocating for our system with City Council and state legislators, you have changed lives. From delivering incredible and balanced budgets, and responsible budgets, I may add, zero-based, given our considerable, considerable financial constraints, to representing us at the local and state level in a variety of capacities, and the love you have for your cabinet, some of whom are here, students and staff, you have changed lives. You came from a faraway land, okay, well, Georgia, not that far away, but you know, far away for some of us, and you immersed yourself in our community. You have left our community a better place than when you came. That is a positive measure of your character, your work ethic, your spirit, and your will. I will never forget your passion for our students and the one time at a School Board meeting that you teared up, well, maybe more than once, but, you know, but you only teared up when something was great and was accomplished by our kids in our school system. Manassas City, its students, and its school system are all better because of you and as you have changed our lives, we hope that in some small measure, we have positively influenced and changed yours. As I was driving here, I saw the brand-new ball fields and the new Baldwin and I was like, you did that. Now, we did it together, but you shepherded us through that. And for our new superintendent coming in, Dr. Newman, he's told me on more than one occasion, you've been a mentor and a friend and even as you exit stage right, you still change lives. We know that you have a lot to give and I admire you for doing what you occasion, you've been a mentor and a friend. And even as you exit stage right, you still change lives. We know that you have a lot to give and I admire you for doing what you often do, making the tough choice to leave us now for the benefit of your family. We wish you, David, and the rest of your family well and respectfully ask that you please keep in touch with us and keep reaching out, keeping us in check. We're going to miss you. God bless you and Godspeed. Next, Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me start by saying thank you to David for allowing us the privilege of having your wife serve as superintendent here for the last six years. And true to form, you signed up at the first and last school board meeting. Kathy, to you, it's a genuine thank you. You took us to a new level. When I think back to six and a half years ago, and we all say the same things with Nationwide Search and everything we did and what we were then, and I look at Mrs. Sebeski who was part of that committee, and I think of what we were, and I saw tonight's website and I think of as chair, when I got up and spoke at a convocation with Y Manassas. You embraced that challenge. You embraced Manassas. You took us to a new level. You increased our accountability. You increased our transparency. Mr. Williams alluded to zero-based budgeting. We didn't maintain the status quo. We looked and said, it's about kids. You looked and said, it's about children. What do children need to be successful? And that was in the root of every decision you made, and it was all based on data. And for that, you strengthened Manassas and as Mr. Williams said, you left it in a far better place than when you came. Talk about retirement and new chapters, and I always say to people, I hope they're not retiring from something and running away, and I know you're not. You're retiring to family and there is nothing better than that. Your parents, your husband, your kids, your grandkids, a new version of Camp McGorick. Who knows what it will bring, but I hope it's pleasure and happiness because you deserve it.
Thanks, sir. And we'll move on to Mr. Damarion.
Thank you.
And I have a bet about whether you both are going to cry or whatever, but we'll see what happens.
Who?
We'll see if you both are going to cry, we'll see how it turns out.
Six years ago, we hired this lady. And as been alluded to tonight, we are in a far better place than we were six years From top to bottom, I look at these people out here, the people that you've recruited, the people that you've kept, the way they have your back, the way they're going to miss you speaks volumes about you. Need to set the record straight a little bit. Four and a half years ago, little over that, the board came and, for some reason, really unknown to me at the time, decided that I should be the chairman. I didn't necessarily agree, but they're smarter than I am, so I went along with it. I had had a good relationship with Dr. McGorick up to that point. On Facebook, a lot of times, people say some hateful things and some very ignorant things and wrong things. Former school board members saying wrong things and ignorant things that this school board and the chairman at the time were puppets to Dr. McGorick. Now, nothing could be further from the truth. While chairman, I spoke with her about every day. I argued with her a lot. We had big discussions between the two of us and between the board. And when we came up here, we had come to some sort of a conclusion already to where we didn't have to argue in public. I had already called her names in private, especially when she won those arguments. And she didn't always win those arguments. And she's forever a teacher. She did such a great job educating me, making me a better leader and a better man. I'll never forget that. And when she won arguments, I got upset and called her a name and we went on, but she was right. And she, when I was right, you know, she would always say, you're so smart, just like she would to a student. And nothing could make me feel better than for somebody of this caliber to tell me I'm smart. I don't always agree with her that way, but she made me feel good. She made me a better person and she always will. When we first got together, Pam and I would argue a lot, Mrs. Sebeski and I would argue a lot. And she would say that you two are just like a brother and sister, that we can argue and then that's the end of it. I've got a couple of stepsisters in the room tonight that I can argue with and they can call me names and get away with it. And the way this ended up, our relationship is more like brother and sister to where we were able to argue, like Pam and I were able to argue, and come out better for it. And I'm going to miss our discussions. I'm not going to be as good a person anymore because you're not going to be there every day. I'm going to miss our arguments. I'm going to miss our agreements. I'm going to miss your leadership, but most of all, I'm just going to miss you. Thank you for everything. I love you.
We need to go to closed session.
Not yet. One more item we have. I get... We were thinking about getting a brand-new car, but we figured you wouldn't want one of those. You want something different, so we have something for you. And I ask all board members to come down to the front so we can take a picture down there with her.
So, I was told that Dr. McGorick likes bright flowers. And we did our best to get her some bright flowers. And we have to the board and just send small token of our appreciation. And as you call out the words, we send a motion to the chair. And we miss you, you're incredible. And David loved it, had him full time. And a card too.
Don't cover your face. Stop, stop it. Don't cover your face. Okay, one, two, three.
Thank you. Yeah. Pam, come on down. Everybody, we have staff who's here, could you... Do you want to take a picture? Yes. Do you want to close here?
He said, yeah. I just want you to get back and get everybody. Y'all have to kind of stand a little bit. Trying to get everybody.
Do we need to move over?
Yeah, kind of pull it. So, we don't get this big old podium in the way. That's good, Mrs. Seberg. Thank you, chair. That's good, yeah. Mrs. Seberg got up on the steps to kind of give us a little bit of depth.
You know, the first graders do much better than this. I just got federal.
I'm taking a picture of us. One, two, three. You never earn any pictures, you go on. One more.
Thank you. Only somebody had black balls.
One thing I didn't say, Dr. Kathy, is that you don't tell me shit.
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
No, sure.
Mr. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711 Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, is amended for the following purposes. Section 2.2-3711 Part A, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Superintendent's Evaluation. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, six-zero. We will enter closed session. Thank you and thank you all for being here today.